Good morning. It's Tuesday, May 10th. It's 9:30 a.m. If you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right, we've got minutes, Commissioners Meeting, Annexation Meeting, and another one special on the fifth.
I will make a motion to approve the May 3 Commissioners Meeting Minutes, the May 3 Annexation Hearing, and the May 5 Commissioners Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussions or changes? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Next order of business, any one here for the public want to make a comment regarding any of our pending resolutions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. We do have a proclamation today. Let's see, this is proclaiming May 2022 as Older Americans Month and May 17, 2022, as Senior Day in Medina County. Whereas Medina County, Ohio includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. Whereas the Medina County Board of Commissioners and Office for Older Adults recognize our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans' need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas the Medina County Board of Commissioners and Office for Older Adults can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, and increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Older Americans Month and May 17, 2022, to be Senior Day in Medina County. We urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their communities.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And I think we'll present it.
I would just, I just want to thank the members of our foundation. Kimberly Valco is here today representing, and my staff, Luella Gilbert, is here, our Adult Protective Services Supervisor and the Board of Commissioners for supporting seniors throughout the county this month and really all months. We all, I think, are doing our best to make sure that Medina County is a spot where seniors want to come and live out their lives. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have resolutions. We have Dan Becker here with the County Engineers' Office.
Morning, Dan.
Morning. Thanks for supporting me as an old person.
Oh, you're not old. Come on.
All right, I have four resolutions for your consideration today. First resolution is approving or authorizing the purchase of a new model year Ford, half-ton pickup truck. A second resolution is accepting awarding Willow Road Concrete Replacement Project. The third resolution is necessity to close Mennonite Road between Seville and Greenwich Road. And the fourth resolution accepting awarding the Chippewa Main Drive Bridge Replacement Project. And then our permits review.
I would like to make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Holly Muren, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I have three resolutions for you today. Our first is our personal changes resolution. We have two new hires, one at sanitary and one in maintenance. Nine rate increases, three in sanitary, two in maintenance, two in transit, one at county home, and one in building. Two leave of absence, one in sanitary and one in transit, and a leave of absence ending in building. Second resolution is amending the table of organization for the Department of Job and Family Services. And the third and final resolution is approving the three-year contract between Teamsters Local 293 and the Medina County Child Support Enforcement Agency.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call. Oh, yeah. Thankfully, yeah. Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Scott Miller, County Administrator. Morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott.
I have three resolutions for you today. The first resolution is authorizing a contract with Sodder Court and Furniture. This is for the provision of jury chairs for the courthouse. There'll be 70 jury chairs at an amount of $46,055.10. The second resolution is leasing, authorizing leasing of vehicles for the Medina County Sheriff's Office and Medina County Prosecutor's Office. This is, these will be Ford Explorers, 2022 Ford Explorers, and they're replacing older vehicles currently in the sheriff's fleet and one of the older vehicles in the prosecutor's fleet. And the third resolution is approving the Medina County Lodging Excise Tax Code of Regulations. This is something that Economic Development, Brickler and Eckler, and the auditor put together. It's establishing a process for the recording and collection of those lodging taxes.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Are we going to be able to get any 2022 vehicles? Are they available? Of course, we might have to wait till 2023.
So Matt called me, our enterprise rep called me last week. He sent over the quotes. He called me like the next day and said, dude, you gotta sign today because you're closing down the lines. I said, I can't do it. And he's like, well, so he checked, we're going to actually get these through a dealer. Dealers have until, I think, the end of this week to order these vehicles, and then the lines are shut down. So these are the last 2022 vehicles that we're going to order. And I don't know when we're going to get them. I don't know if we'll get them. We'll probably get them next year sometime.
Wow.
There you have it.
I will point out the Lodging Excise Tax Code, as I did last week when we were reviewing it. This is not a new tax. This is a tax that was levied back in 1990. This is merely the regulations for the administration and collection of that lodging tax. With that, roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have eight finance resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the 2022 Appropriations Resolution by transferring appropriations. The second is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The third is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County Print Shop revenue line item. The fourth is cash transfer for various funds, and this represents that initial component from the clerk of courts donating to the sheriff's department for equipment and training. The fifth is authorizing change order number one to the agreement with Gardner for the VRV installation and boiler replacement at the Medina County Home. This allows for two wall-mounted VRV units in the nurses' station and the office that were excluded as part of the original proposal. The sixth is authorizing an agreement with Affordable Heating and Cooling Solutions LLC. This is to replace the rooftop air handler located at the Medina County Juvenile Detention Center with ARPA funding. It's a cost of $13,060.26, which is a great price to have another component managed from an air quality perspective under the ARPA funds. The seventh is allowing expenses of county officials. The eighth is approving claims for the week in the amount of $1,329,176.54.
I'll make a motion to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
I just would like to say thank you to Dave Wadsworth for making money available to the sheriff's office for the equipment and the training. So it's appreciated.
Yep. Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
All right. Next, we have department updates. Greg Brown, our County Home Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Starting with census, we're at 41 and holding with one adult daycare participant. Breaks down to 19 women and 22 men. Two events that happened in April that I didn't mention of the last meeting on the 19th. We always try to give back, so we participate with Feeding Medina County. So our custodian took six of the residents there, and they packed boxes full of food, so they did that. On the 27th, the residents threw Becky Hess, that was our recreation coordinator for 22 years, who still hasn't officially retired yet. Her retirement party, coffee shop, of course, had kids. And we, they put together a scrapbook of her fondest memories that they had of her and old pictures. She may or may not have teared up when she finally left there, and we're working hard on that one. And in May, May 1st, was Medina Kids Care, their 20th Annual Horse Show. Divine Intervention kept it from raining on us because it should have rained that whole time. 25 residents attended that one. Tomorrow, May 11th, is our ladies' luncheon, which is our version of Mother's Day. We had some family members donate money for this. It was being catered by Schoolhouse Catering, and they graciously gave us a discount for that. So there's always a competition between the ladies' luncheon and the men's barbecue, and they are really jealous of our steaks from last year, so they'll make them this year. 28th, Access the Arts is starting out on Memorial Day weekend with live music. And then another tradition at the home, May 30th, is always ribs for dinner. For our staffing, good news to report. I've got two candidates for the LPN Nursing Supervisor position right now. And this Wednesday, tomorrow, I'm interviewing an applicant for the Recreation Coordinator position. So they're right positive, positive. AC project at the home, so the north and south are up and running. I've got cold air in my office, which is amazing. And then the last wing is this week, which is the west wing that they're finishing up. And then they'll connect east and west next week, and then it'll be fully up and operational.
Sure.
Absolutely. Just in time, too. Nice weather.
Mm-hmm.
AC. Collaborations, I had Eric, the district manager from Soil and Water, come over yesterday and bring us a composter. We've got our garden this year, and we thought, hey, we can make our own compost and do that ourselves. Brought us a guide on how to do it, so we're ready for that. And then also, yesterday, Leadership Medina County had three groups of about 15 people come through. Amy Perrine gave them the grand tours. And that was, yeah, that's great. Anytime that people can come through and learn about the home is always great.
Mm-hmm. Awesome.
That's all I have.
Thanks.
Good. Very good. Great. Great.
All right.
Good job.
Thanks.
And we have Philip Tiderington here with us, Adam, Board Director.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, everybody. I'll just provide you with a quick update from the Adam Board from the quarter. It's been very busy, but I do want to publicly recognize, because they're here in the audience, the prosecutor's office, of course, you guys. Right now, with our fiscal year and all the contracts, and we have capital projects and everything going on, we appreciate you and all you're doing. I understand all the stuff that's on you, especially Mike. So thank you there. You guys have been very good, very quick, very professional, so that helps us out quite a bit. So just to kind of give you a quick update, then, you know, mental health, behavioral health, still a crisis. Hasn't gone away. So what we're doing is, you know, we're starting to see more, and we're dealing with a lot more youth, severe youth with a lot of issues. So a lot of my time, a lot of my staff's time is helping navigate throughout. Good news is, is in order to combat this, we are in the middle of a construction project. So we have a capital project that we're going to do on Northland Drive. And when it's all said and done, we received $750,000 capital grant from the state. It's going to be about a 6,000-square-foot youth family resiliency center, trauma-focused. What we find is, especially when children and families are going through this process, I mean, they're traumatized as it is. And if you're, you know, going through the normal standard, they just get re-traumatized, and we don't even know it. You know, we're just the way that they have to sit, where they are waiting, how they're interacted with and so. So with this 6,000-square unit, it's going to be impatient. I mean, it's going to be outpatient, no quote impatient. So there is no overstay. And we are going to contract, the Adam Board is contracting with Ohio Guidestone to provide those services. We've had several community meetings, meeting with other partners and collaborated because there's a lot of opportunity there, such as Job and Family Services, other providers and such. So we're excited about that. But as you can imagine, it's a process. So hopefully here, we're in the construction contract phase. So once that's approved, then I think we're going to see some dirt move. So let's see, just to kind of give you some other things here is, in the third quarter, the Adam Board agencies, which are Ohio Guidestone Cafeteries as well as Alternative Paths, Alternative, let's see, they are now operating in Lodi. There's Wadsworth. And Ohio Guidestone operates in the Brunswick area. They do a lot in-home stuff, so they're able to hit there. We are constantly looking at if there's a need or does it make sense to have a satellite office? What we're finding is, is a lot of people prefer either in-home now. They're getting back to being comfortable there. Reduces transportation issues, childcare issues. They can come in. A lot of them are still doing telehealth at this point, so we're exploring that and working with Brunswick City as well to see what their needs are. Our 24/7 Crisis and Behavioral Help Line through Alternative Paths. Numbers, over this last quarter, they had 815 calls or engagements through that hotline. 68 individuals verbalized suicidal thoughts. I mean, that's something that we are seeing it increase in, especially middle-aged men. That seems to be that higher-risk area at this point. We're very closely with the Health Department and such and try to identify and the Suicide Prevention Coalition through Medina County on how we can reach these high-risk populations. There were 20 active rescues occurred. That means that the hotline staff coordinated rescue activities, had a police officer or whomever over, and they were able to stop, you know, a successful suicide, if you will. And the really good news is, is if there is good news in this, there were 79 referrals were made from law enforcement to crisis intervention. So as you, you know, may recall that we do provide crisis intervention training to law enforcement through Alternative Paths and the groups there. So law enforcement's feeling more comfortable acting in the crisis to go out and help with that. So we are exploring and working with law enforcement as well to see what kind of a mental health-type wellness that they may need for their officers and staff. So I know Sheriff Grice is very active in that, as well as Chief Chapman from Wadsworth PD. So we'll keep you posted on as that goes. Just, there are 1,728 adults and 147 youth are currently receiving psychiatric services. So that's, you know, the intense services there. So, and also with Adam Board's support, there's a law team. I mentioned this, the last quarter, basically what that is, is when there is a successful suicide, law enforcement has the opportunity to contact the clinician through Alternative Paths. They'll come out and they'll assist the family. They're not providing counseling. That's not the appropriate place. But they're providing comfort, information, and then perhaps some follow-up. Unfortunately, they were dispatched 13 times in the last quarter, so. Just moving quickly then on to recovery supports, because that seems to be one of the big things that's growing, and it continues to grow. This quarter has seen more referrals to detox or residential than we have seen. April was the highest month, so we're kind of monitoring to see if May, if that's an anomaly or if this is a trend that we don't want to see. Working, and we invest heavily in the Hope Recovery Community. Good news is, is they have just expanded their services into Brunswick. So the Adam Board was able to provide them with some funding to help out. They have a partnership with the Church of Nazarene out there, who've opened up their doors, allowed them to have some office space. They're operating there. In addition, Kathy's House has leased a house from the Church of Nazarene. They have six beds for mail, and those are full as well, so we'll be able to help them with rent and some operation costs. So we know kind of, as we've seen Hope Recovery Community and how quickly they build in Medina County, that I think you're just going to see this just ripple right through. Once again, the city of Brunswick is very happy and very collaborative in that approach as well. And also just in Medina County itself, in Medina City, there's a hub is over on Highland Drive. We had a board property there. They're just kind of uprowing that. So some of the good news as well, and the burden's on the prosecutors, we have another contract for construction. We received a $350,000 capital grant to help towards, we're going to add another 3,000 square feet to the house over on Highland. So we have an increase there for office space, for meetings and things like that. And I think we've pretty much maximized it. By the time it's all said and done, it'll be about a 7,000-square-foot building. We can't go anymore. So I think at this point here, we're going to make sure that we concentrate on Brunswick City and some of the other areas as well. So we work very closely with Hope Recovery Community to try to help reduce. They do a lot of transportation. They help people get. Just to put it in perspective, they have, through Hope Recovery Community and Ohio Guidestone, there's a partnership. There are 24 peer supporters through the county, and they're assisting, you know, individuals who come through with transporting them to doctor visits, for employment, for all of those basic needs and just kind of walking them through. They also have a Hopeleak phone. See, there's so much. I'll have to keep coming back here. There's a, what we did was, is we had a partnership with Hope Recovery Community and Alternative Paths, so that when an individual calls the crisis line, if there's a need for them to get connected with a peer supporter, we have somebody that, or Hope Recovery Community through our funding, has somebody available 24/7. It's successful and it works. But what we found over the last year is, is it's not hitting everybody that it's really intended. I mean, if people are calling for crisis, they're getting that work. But there's a lot of individuals who just need that to talk to a peer supporter, to have some support, to have some kind of reassurance all hours of the day, right? So what we've done is, is allowed them to keep that staff 24/7. And if you call the Hope Recovery Community line now, somebody will address it 24/7. So we're looking at that. Already those calls. It's only been in operation for a couple of weeks, and there's already been 34 calls. So, and that's just one of those warm touches again, to, you know, get somebody from maybe a hot moment to a cool moment so that, you know, maybe the next day, they can get them into detox, get them into residential and such. So we're really happy there. So finally, all that we're doing with the Adam Board, and we thank you for your support as well, is really heavily dependent on that levy. So we are very appreciative for the Human Services Levy and that partnership. That levy not only supports the Adam Board, but Office for Older Adults and Job and Family Services, too. So because of that, we have that flexibility to hit those specific needs to Medina County. So that's a quick recap. Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
So you threw out statistics for a lot of different programs and numbers of people. Do we know how many people across the county are affected or are involved in programs that are served through the Adam Board?
Good question.
Indirectly.
Well, through the Adam Board, we have a pretty good idea of the number of individuals for, I can tell you, active clients here.
Well, no, no, I get that, but I'm talking about, you know, you've got Kathy's House. You've got six beds new. You've got, I don't know, six or eight in the old facility. And when you look at the folks that are served by Hope Recovery, by Alternative Paths, I'm just looking for an overall number. How many people in Medina County have been, have received services that are supported through the levy?
I'm going to have to put all of those numbers together, because Kathy's House now has 27 male beds available. We have the 12 beds for women as well, and they keep growing. Hope Recovery Community, on average, has 2,000 touches a month, so.
My sense is that if you added all that together, it's going to be a pretty significant number.
It is. It is. We will try to put everything. I know one of the things that Hope Recovery Community tries to data collect, and one of the issues with data collection and such is you need a data platform. Nobody wants to give you a data platform. The ones that they give you are the ones that are very difficult, but you all know. And then, so we're in the process of looking at how they can start to compile that information. Because we'd also like to gather some of the information on the types of calls that they're getting. What do those look like? And then what's the process there? So, yeah.
Be interesting data point.
And our levy, we're going to address the levy next year. So we will start to put this information together. Anybody have a less hard question?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have your homework assignment, for sure. Thanks, Phil. We have a couple resolutions here. County Commissioners appointing a member to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability. This appoints for the village, Representative for the Village Mayor's Association, Carol Carter, as Village Mayor Number Two Representative, and that would be for a term expiring September 30th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. We, and next resolution is approving the petition for the regular annexation of 0.4417 acres of land known as being part of Brunswick Hills Township to the city of Brunswick, Medina County, Ohio. We had an annexation hearing here last week. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, we next have, well, this involves the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding as well as appointment to represent for Region 19. I believe we need to rescind Resolution 220355 approving an intergovernmental service contract to establish the governance structure for Region 19 under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding, and 220356 approving the appointment of Medina County Commissioner William Hudson as interim representative from Region 19.
I'll make a motion to rescind Resolutions Number 22-0355 and 22-0356.
Second.
Okay. Want to explain why, because we do have some resolutions here that will follow that kind of clarify.
Sure, sure.
Go ahead, Phil.
So the informal committee trying to establish the Region 19 Governance Board has met several times over the past six or eight months and to come up with a governance structure. And at our last meeting, we passed the two resolutions that were mentioned. And since that time, we have met again and have changed the governance document. And as I expressed in our prior meeting, there were some concerns about the appointments of individuals by the counties. It was to be an individual that was supposed to represent the villages, townships, and cities. And there is a meeting coming up with the One Ohio Board down in Columbus. And since we don't have those folks on board yet, we took that language out. So in the short term, the Region 19 Board will consist of a appointment, beginning a commissioner from each of the seven counties that are part of Region 19. As we flesh this out, we will likely revisit that organizational agreement and come up with an individual or a position that would then be appointed by the counties or elected by the cities, townships, and villages. But we need to get our representative for Region 19 appointed. We're having a meeting tomorrow afternoon in Mansfield to get together and to do that appointment and to get Region 19 off the ground so that we can be represented down at the state.
All right. And first, we need to rescind the ones we did. So at this point, that's what the motion is, to rescind those two. Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. So we do have the next resolution approving this new intergovernmental service contract to establish a governance structure for Region 19 under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And are we going to do both of them and also the point?
Okay, and we also have the one that appoints Commissioner William Hudson to be Representative of the Board of Commissioners of Medina County to serve on that Region 19 Governance Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
All right. Moved to second. Any further discussion, explanation? All right. Roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next, we do have a notice of liquor permit filing. Commissioners received notice of new liquor permit request from Dolgen Midwest LLC Doing Businesses Dollar General Store located on 1302 Marks Road, Liverpool Township in Valley City. This is for a C1 and C2 permit class. We don't, we're not requesting a hearing, and this is just being provided for as a matter of record. Next, open up the public, public comments. While saying that, we'll go ahead and open up to our discussion session. Scott, did you want to start?
Sure, we can. So in the past, whenever we've gone to extend sewer lines, we've done surveys, we've gotten surveys back from residents as to who would want to tap in, and then based on the information that we receive, that determines whether or not we actually tie in, or actually extend the lines. And so we sent out surveys for Fix the Road, and we got enough, about 50% of the residents wanted to tap into the sewer lines. And so we started moving forward with the project, or planning the project, notified the Health Department, the Health Department came back, and they've changed their policy. In the past, the policy was to require individuals to tap in when their septic lines, or when their septic tanks, septic systems failed. Well, they've changed the policy now, where they're going to require everybody to tap in. So we're hesitant to actually move forward with this project, because that, the Health Department will then require everybody on Fix the Road to tap into the sewer lines, even if they have a brand-new septic system in place.
But why is that their policy, if their septic system is fine?
So the revised code requires individuals to tap into the sewer lines, if it's available. But in our reading of the code, it appears that they've got a lot of discretion as to what that timing is, so in our opinion, they have the ability to require people to tap in when their septic tanks fail, or when the house is sold, there's nothing in the revised code that says they have to tie in within a certain.
Time frame, right.
Yeah, so based on that information, and the new policy that's in place, talking, Jeremy's here, he's here. We're thinking that just to put that project on hold, and I think Commissioner Hambley's going to, as the liaison, is going to have some discussions with the Health Department on the policy, and maybe talk to them about going back to the old policy, because it's really going to have a negative impact, because if we don't extend the sewer line, then when septic tanks do fail, there's no alternative other than to put another septic tank.
But the policy is almost doing exactly what they don't want to happen, like we're putting a project on hold.
Exactly, right.
When they want people to head to sewers.
We're not able to improve the quality of the environment, because essentially, we don't want to force people to connect in with, that have perfectly good, working.
Agreed. Actually, this has been an issue for decades, and historically, that's why there was provisions with the code, I remember there was issues about a decade or so ago that involved the representative from Geogee County, when it was going through the last change, state representative, and that latitude was given within the administrative code to allow the Health Departments to make that determination, for that very purpose, and I think it is, I agree, what it's going to force us to not extend lines, and therefore, long-term degrades the water quality, as opposed to, we're the ones that have to pay for lines that go across neighbor, well, just across properties, where people aren't forced to tap in. And so if the system can support that, and eventually they'll tap in, that's great, but at this point, it's, I agree, I think it's something that we need to discuss with our Health Department, it's a recent change in policy that they've implemented, and counter to what we've been doing for decades, as we've extended the lines.
And maybe their policy could extend to some sort of year timeframe, so that people have the opportunity to financially save up for the tap-in, or, you know, make financial plans.
But even if that, if I just spent $15,000.
Right, you're right.
And a functioning system, right.
That's going to last for 20 or 30 years, you know, now we're going to spend another $7,000 or $8,000 to tap in and put a sewer line in.
Yeah, that's exactly, exactly.
It just doesn't seem to make sense.
Yeah, I agree. In good faith, these individuals, homeowners, whenever they've had it, they've made that investment, or even talk about a new home they put in there, they could literally be forced to go ahead and have that additional expense, and actually close down a system that is purely functional, and in compliance with the law. They're already licensed, they're already permitted, so to deny them the ability to use something that's permitted, I think is just very shortsighted. But I'm meeting with the Health Director tomorrow morning, actually, and I'll be part of the conversation with her, talk about this policy, and hopefully they can create some more latitude, otherwise, we're not going to be expanding in areas that normally we would consider.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, long-term, that's counter to what their own preferences, as a Board of Health.
Okay. I just wanted to make you aware of the situation.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Speaking of sewers, Jeremy, you have something for us?
Hey, just wanted to let you know that the outbound scale at the Solid Waste District has been replaced. We had the weights and measure inspector out, gave us the green light, so as of like 10 o'clock or so AM on Monday, the new commercial outbound scale is in service, and then about two weeks, a week from this weekend, actually, they'll be out to do the inbound scale, so we'll get the same notifications out for that. The weights and measures inspector said it was the shiniest new scale that he's ever seen, so, he's like, usually we don't get to do the new ones, so, but it went pretty quick and easy, so.
Good.
Great.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks, all right. Amy, do you have anything for us?
I just wanted to remind you that the paid time off program that was put into place for COVID with ARPA dollars is set to expire at the end of May. If you recall, that was from June 1 of '21 through May, end of May '22. And just to give you some statistics, it covered over 11,300 hours of personnel time. We're just under $300,000 for total dollars spent to date, but we've really, you know, we're on the downside of that bell curve, like the months that were the primary months in which that was put to great use were in January and February, where we had 57 employees and then 86 employees, respectively, that were able to take advantage of that generous offering. But the last two adjustments we've done, in April, we only had six employees, and then in May, we've got five. So the question just is, do we want to extend that program for the few, you know, that may continue? You know, there's two employees I know of currently that, you know, would qualify, you know, for that, it's still within the month of May, I just don't know, and wanted to bring to your attention for some thought, whether or not you wanted to continue that program, or we felt fair that it's followed the bell curve, and it's really provided that benefit when most needed during the height of the pandemic.
I guess I, from everything that I'm hearing, you know, we're sort of out of the cycle, so I guess my inclination would be to let it expire, and then if we do need it again, to reconsider it later.
I am absolutely fine with that.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, ma'am.
I do have a second, I think I read something that we've been given the approval to go ahead and apply for the second tranche of ARPA dollars.
So the Auditor's Office received the notice through the U.S. Treasury Web Portal, that the notification came through allowing us to apply for that second tranche, and Dinesh Camillo did put that request through.
Do we have any idea when that money will be coming?
The first tranche came through June 2nd of '21, so we would expect it to be somewhere along those same timelines.
So within a month, we should.
Within a month, we'll know.
When we do get it, and after you subtract these kind of things, that we get a final dollar number, because now that it's May, I'd really like us to look at the two park district requests, I mean, at least evaluate them, now that it's their summer season.
Well, I think, I think we ought to look at all of them.
I would agree.
Because we have a number of requests out there that we never formally give a thumbs up or thumbs down on, and I think we should prioritize them and.
Right. I just brought up the park district, now that it is.
And I agree, we also have one from the Commission Visitors Bureau, likewise for their loss or revenues for the bed tax, and I know that Brigger, Eckler, our counsel, has reviewed that request and come back with some response, so I think you're right, there's a number of them we need to take a look at. Once we get the money, in the bank.
And then, what's left.
Absolutely, because LMRE withdrew their request as well, so you do have some things we, you know, discussion had occurred, and you committed to that have changed.
And that was a six or 700,000.
That's correct, so I think, yeah, we can revisit that.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Super, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
All right. Ollie, anything for discussion? Stephen?
I just have a couple updates real quick. The jails entry renovation project is completed, I think all we have to do is do some rekeying, and that'll be completed off of our project list. As Greg mentioned, the county homes HVAC system will be completed, I think our timeline is the 20th of this month, and then the jails HVAC system, the boiler, the old boiler has been removed, the new boiler's been set, and then the new chiller will be going in next week, so next Thursday, we'll actually have a new chiller being installed, just to give you updates on those two projects.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Forrest, do you have anything for discussion?
No.
Okay, all right. Any other, okay, aren't that, I guess we do have some requests for executive session? Or I forgot, Bill, do you have anything? Sorry.
No, thank you.
I just want to say, we're meeting 1:00 on Monday with McDAC, Amy has diligently got all the grant applications ready, and we will have a discussion on distribution of the funds on Monday.
Super.
I think we have 1.75 million to distribute, so that'll be Monday. Okay, I would like to make a motion to consider the compensation of a public employee, to consider the employment of a public employee, and to discuss imminent litigation.
Second.
Move second, roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Thank you very much, thank you for joining us, and this will conclude our live broadcast. Thank you.